Who would be the conveners counsel?
Sir.
All those in favor? I thought I made a statement, there were no votes taken in our executive session tonight, but there may be an open session as the labor agenda comes up.
Who would be the seal minutes of the session?
Sir.
All those in favor? Thank you. I want to open the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of February 20th, 2018 to order. With a moment of stop, meditation is moved to the floor.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best hope that could there be injustice
Okay, we have first up is the introduction of Monica Gordon, the new PPW custodian. Monica?
Sure. I'd like to introduce Monica Gordon, the new public works custodian. She's been a resident of Hopkinton most of her life, raised her family here. She came to us very highly recommended. She's very detail oriented, she's very conscientious and a real hard worker. And she comes in smiling.
Nice to meet everybody. I've met so many nice people and I don't think, this is the start of my second week. Everyone's been wonderful and I feel so fortunate to work for the town.
Okay, next up, hearing petition for zoning ordinance amendment and comprehensive plan future land use map amendment. Continue the hearing on petition for zoning ordinance amendment involving a zoning map amendment and a comprehensive plan map amendment filed by Oak Square Partners, 119 Brain Street Suite 211, Boston, Mass. For property owned by Emile Holdings LLC, 12 North Road, Hawkeettuck, Connecticut, located on High Street, Ashway, Rhode Island, identified as assessor's plat four lot two, an RFR 80 zone. This matter was continued from January 16th, 2018, in order to receive an advisory opinion on said petition from the Hopkinton Planning Board, which was rendered on February 7th, 2018, following a separate public hearing. Mr. Kamala.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Attorney George Paul, representing the clear office. I'll be brief because I've already put through my presentation of January 16th, 2018. As we all know, the property is located in High Street, Ashway. It's comprised of property which is 6.67 acres, of which 32.22 is proposed as a solar array. Property is currently zoned RFR 80. We're requesting the town for both a rezone and amendment to the future land use plan. We're requesting that the rezone be specific to a solar array and solar array only. We'd ask that the town not put a timeline on it, but say that if any time that this property is no longer used as a solar array, it revert back specifically to RFR 80. So if they put a solar array there, in 10 years, that technology is antiquated, it reverts back to RFR 80 and the deconditioning plan kicks in. We believe that's more than fair than putting a specific timeline on it. The planning board gave recommendations which we endorse wholeheartedly. As of this date, we've already received national approval to put a 98 kilowatt facility there and we received development site plan review. So subject to this rezone, we're ready to go forward. We're hopefully we will embrace this, we're going to do away with a preexisting nonperforming use which has had a top commercial pass. And we're going to put clean energy, it's something that the town will be proud of. I'll be glad to answer any questions, but most of the presentation I previously put forward.
Everybody have any questions for George?
I do agree that we shouldn't put a timeframe on it because it may come up again to be redone with updated stuff. But definitely we need to do the revert back to RFR 80 and clean up of that.
I just wanted to thank you George for your presentation. I'm actually for this for two main reasons. The neighbors have no argument against it, in fact, they welcome it. Two, I actually don't know what you're going to do with that piece of property down there. This doesn't go in. So for two good reasons right there, as far as I'm concerned, it's a great project for that site.
And I have no comment because I'm a tease. No, I think we're all set. I would just, you need to incorporate whatever is the planning board who likes to do, and we'll make the decision later. I think we've got to go.
Yeah, thanks George, I appreciate it. Actually, it'll solve a lot of problems over there.
I hope so.
Turn around, a public question to be heard on this particular matter.
I have a question.
Please come to the podium.
My name is Margaret Smith, my own property fell in a draw. My question is, if you vote on this zone change, what is, does that take effect immediately? Or what are the conditions for that to kick in?
I imagine it does take effect immediately. I assume it takes effect immediately. And like Silvia alluded to, we're also going to make a stipulation subject to planning board guidelines and whatever else stipulations we want.
I just want to make sure that the nonperforming, preexisting nonperforming use is gone as soon as you vote. That was my position.
It would be. It would only revert back, right, exactly. It would be instantaneous.
And are we going to do that tonight or do we have to wait?
I think this is a continued, yeah, we have to close it and then two weeks we'll render our decision.
Two weeks you render, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else which would be heard on this particular issue? Can I have a motion to passively close this hearing and set a vote?
Who would close the hearing?
Set a date.
Yeah, and set a date for a decision.
Please, a motion made in second, all those in favor? All right. Changes, objections?
I'm routine, so I don't vote at all.
What do you think Lisa?
So you have town council meeting on March 5th and one on 9th, on the 19th. I believe that the only thing that has to happen is that the ordinance has to be crafted for that, so that can be ready.
Yeah, I can have it ready a couple days from now.
Okay, so the 5th is not, okay, so let's do the 5th then.
What is it, you would have any kind of?
Actually, it's one, two ordinances, one to equate the zoning classification and the other to equate the change to the solar.
Right, but nothing about findings of that.
Okay, March 5th is. Thank you George. Okay, number two, petitions for zoning ordinance amendment and comprehensive plan future land use map amendment. Open a hearing on petitions filed for zoning ordinance amendment and an amendment to the Hopkinton comprehensive plan future land use map filed by Rhode Island Solar Renewable Energy LLC, 43 Creston Way, Raleigh, and Maxon Hill LLC, 10 Costa Farm Road, Hope Valley, Rhode Island, for property owned by Maxon Hill LLC and located at 310 Main Street, identified as assessor's plat four lot 25, an RFR 80. The applicants are requesting an amendment to the zoning map and comprehensive plan map to allow for a rezone of the subject property from RFR 80 to commercial special, limiting the use to solar energy collection, to allow for the installation of a solar array, and is filed in accordance with appendix A, zoning section 16A through E of the zoning ordinances of the town of Hopkinton as an amendment. Mr. Vakas.
Good evening. Not too bad. We're looking to have the hearing commence on March 19th when we present our evidence before the council because the planning board is not going to render its advisory recommendation until 7 March 7th, I believe.
So we should move to continue the hearing until March 19th.
Motion made in second, any further questions folks? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So March 19th, for anybody that's interested in the planning, excuse me? The planning board, the planning board will be March 7th.
March 7th.
They'll deal with it.
Is that published?
Absolutely, right here.
Will we get no, no notification?
Will we get notification for that?
That is an interesting question.
Just remember the day we hear.
Well, I wonder, maybe they just could go home tonight and maybe they would on the 19th, they don't know, so I'm wondering how that would be.
Where am I also?
7th and the 9th.
7th and the 9th, correct. Planning Board's 7th, 7th beyond.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And there's also a copy of, yeah, I'm gonna say, but there's a copy of this in the town hall, if you want a little, just over the proposal.
Thank you.
Well, there's one, there's one copy.
There's one copy.
Okay, so two minutes for the floor. Hey folks, if you guys want to go outside, we've got to continue our meeting, thank you. All right, next up, consent agenda approved, town council meeting minutes of February 5th, 2018, executive session minutes of February 5th, 2018, workshop notes of January 29th, 2018, set March 5th, 2018 as a hearing date for a special event permit for Hopkinton Day filed by the Ashway Sportsman's Club, accept the following monthly financial activity report, town clerk approve abatement due motor vehicle adjustment submitted by the tax assessor, approve refunds resulting from overpayments of 2017 real property tax submitted by the tax collector.
I need to pull February 5th council meeting minutes and executive session minutes of February 5th, only because I was absent, so I'm just saying, so approved except for town council meeting minutes of February 5th and executive session meetings of February 5th.
Okay, motion made in second, all those in favor? All right. Thank you.
Motion to approve town council meeting minutes of February 5th and executive session minutes of February 5th.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
I got it.
Jan, I'll abstain.
First public forum, anyone out there wishing to be heard? Next, under my report, just a couple quick things. Myself, Bill and Tom attended a breakfast meeting with the superintendent of General Schools, Gary Ritchie. We went over a lot of budgetary items and argument points, I guess, but anyway, so it was a productive meeting. Charlestown was not represented, I believe, by the town, just Richmond and us, and so it was a good meeting. And then we had our first budget meeting on the 12th and we went through a lot of departments and that's a work in progress. So that's it for me. Next, under new business, number one, discuss, consider and possibly vote to authorize the town manager to sign a proposed legal services agreement by which the town adjoins several other Rhode Island communities as plaintiffs in certain multi-district litigation against those entities legally responsible for the wrongful distribution of prescription opiates and to recover damages caused by those so responsible. Eva Mancuso, the lead attorney in Rhode Island is not here, she may be here at quarter eight, so I guess if we can just maybe move that item towards the bottom, what's left of our agenda.
Sure.
I'd appreciate it, see if you can get her to come and talk about this for us. So table that to the bottom there.
I'm just, a motion to move the new business on the legal services to the end of our meeting. Just second.
Okay, motion made in second, all those in favor? All right. Thank you. So number two, under new business, discuss charitable transportation categorical aid. Mr. Rossell, our finance director's here. I know Brian included some paperwork in our packets for us to review. This kind of came about, I was hearing in the community that the transportation aid that the district is supposed to get through the state legislature typically gets level funded and there's about 588,000 that if it's restored, we would get a certain 36% portion of that. But I was hearing that charitable district wanted to keep the money for whatever reason to possibly plug in some holes that they have in a capital campaign, a five-year capital campaign. So I wasn't too happy to hear that, so we discussed with the superintendent on the meeting of the 12th, with our meeting, and I just couldn't, I didn't feel very comfortable about where they were on their five-year capital campaign. I guess my bottom line on this thing is that I wanted to send, us to agree to send a letter to the superintendent and the district to basically tell them that we don't want them to keep any of that money, we expect if it is restored that we get our share of the money, bottom line. I don't, you know, I particularly don't care how many, how much money they're behind in a capital campaign at all, that's their issue. I'm not going to call him if we have a hole in our budget because of whatever. So I'm very, very adamant about this and I hope everyone else is too, but that's my ultimate goal here. Brian's going to attempt to explain the voodoo economics here that comes forward out of charitable and it's, you know.
And Brian, could you provide a history too?
Yeah, I did, I provided the last three years since the.
No, I was going to say the history of this funding at all. Why do we think we should have it? When did it ever come up? Was it ever promised? I wondered if you knew that history.
As far as the categorical aid or the transportation aid, the history of.
Whenever it was promised for regional districts and didn't we ever get it? Didn't it always go to the towns or, you know, those sorts of things?
Yeah, I'm not that knowledgeable about it, to be completely.
You probably know more than I do.
So the history going back, I know that it's generally been funded to the school and split between the three towns. That's my understanding of it, I don't want to speak on this too highly because I have to research that historically. I do know, I did try to get as much information as I could from charitable and the school district provided me some information, but as Frank said, you know, it was very difficult for me to come to a conclusion as to where they stand in that plan. They gave me an explanation that 2.1 million was budgeted, but that according to the agreement with RYE, it has to be spent, not budgeted. So I wasn't able to get a figure as how much has actually been spent. So it was really, I wasn't really, really brought up to speed and I really couldn't give too much synopsis other than, you know, where they stand as far as budgeting, but it was very difficult to get some information needed. As far as the plan, I was able to get a copy of the RYE agreement with charitable and I provided that in your package, but again, as far as what's been spent, I don't have that information, they were not able to provide that to me, but I did provide also in the package what's been funded since the five-year plan has started, and that was that 2.1 million figure, but I think it's all.
And we're three years into this five-year capital plan, right?
Correct, yes.
So I guess, according to, I think, your numbers, it looks like they'll make out okay if they continually funding this item, right?
Yeah, and there's.
Right, there's six, seven hundred thousand a year that went into this.
Correct, yeah, it was 6.5 million and according to charitable, they have to spend 50% of that by the end of fiscal year '21. So they've budgeted 2.1, how much they've spent, that's the big question mark. And then an explanation was given to me that a lot of the projects, the bigger projects are actually budgeted over multiple years, so that just because they funded them in previous years, they haven't spent the money. So if they had a, you know, million dollar project at one of the elementary schools, for example, they would budget, you know, 350,000, 250,000, they would incrementally fund it, similar to what we've done in the past with bigger projects, but that doesn't really help as far as being spent. So that's another pitfall that they've come across and again, I don't really want to speak too much about it, I'm just trying to inform you with what information I was able to gather from charitable.
So, you know, like I said, my objective would be for us to send the matter to the superintendent, letting him know that anything short of returning that money to the member towns on the categorical aid, again, this was a Rhode Island general law that was passed by the legislature and they continually lever fund that item and this year in particular it's about 588,000 and our share is about 36% of that, so it would have balanced our budget. And, you know, so the legislature is kind of a separate piece, I reached out to whoever I could to make sure that they hopefully restore it, but who knows what's going to happen.
You know, charitable, as we know, holds on to 2% or thereabouts of funding, just because, and they've never, well, they do, and if they needed money, they have more than a million dollars, but they just hang on to a case of, which could be clearly used for capital, they wanted to.
Yes, Laura.
Yeah, I thought all of the council meetings and that is true, they have a 2% surplus that is kept as the same way that we keep our fund balance, because we need to floor bonds and we need to, because it protects the town. And in school, it also protects the school, if there's a major, like the roof coming down, and Richmond was pretty massive and was not planned for in the budget, and so they could use the fund balance to take care of that. The last several years, they have postponed capital improvement, one because like the Richmond turnaround is going to be several million dollars, it's going to take a lot of work, and so they have to add money in each year in order to fund that, and they can't spend it until they have the money to spend. They've also, in the last several years, they have postponed capital improvements and they postponed the money that goes into capital improvements which lowers our prior budgets, because they lowered their school budgets by not funding the capital plan, and now they need to have the money to spend it in order to continue to get housing aid. If they don't spend it, we are out much more money for housing aid, and I think that's in millions. So their concern is making sure they have the money to spend for the capital so that they can continue to get the housing aid, which is millions, but they have cut the capital expenses over the last several years, cut their budget there specifically to lower our budgets, because we all, both Richmond and this year Hopkinton, Richmond the past two years have asked to have reductions, and that's one of the places they need reductions. So I understand the reason they want to keep the transportation aid, because it would go into the capital budget. Otherwise, what will happen next year is if it is given back to the towns, which, you know, may indeed occur, but if it does, will simply be taxed for the holes that this aid would have filled. So I understand where they're trying to go with this, and I realize that most of you feel like having the fund balance is not necessary for the schools, but I believe thoroughly it is and 2% is perfectly valid, because when you have something massive like the entire roof of the Richmond school, it's amazing coming down, you'd better have a fund balance to do that, because we can't just come back to the citizens and say, oh, by the way, it needs a million this year. So I understand why they're trying to do that. I don't know if there's a compromise in there where they can keep a percentage of it and the rest of the percentages can come back to the town, so I don't know if that's even a possibility, but I do understand why they want the additional money, the same way we would if our capital improvement plan was underfunded.
The compromise is they give us the money that we're entitled to.
Is it standard point of view?
The spirit of the legislation that was passed had to do with transportation, because we're a rural community, had nothing to do with filling holes in a capital campaign. I can honestly tell you that, so.
I'm not disagreeing. I also believe that the.
It's our money.
Isn't in the charitable act for them to keep the schools updated? I think it's part of the act, maintained. The other thing is, by them not doing the maintenance, which is part of the charitable act, is not cutting our budgets, they need to cut their budget, not short sight the repairs that are legally required of them.
But they cut their budget in order to help our budgets.
They didn't cut the budget, the budget runs at 2%, a 1.1. But the budget go up.
The original budgets for this year, last year, and the year before, all the town, two years in Richmond, this year in Hopkinton, in particular, asking for the entire school budget to be cut, and when they cut, they cut from their capital.
That's right, the budget itself is not cut by.
The budget.
It still increases.
Of course it still increases. That has to do with, but that has to do with personnel, that has to do with.
Look at it this way.
That has to do with health.
I might, after this, I'm not going to say anymore about it, because I've been down this road for.
A hundred times.
A million years since I've been on this town council. You and I used to sit there when we first got on the council and go line by line over that budget that Duncan was best seeing back then.
And I have continued to do that for 12 years.
And that budget goes up every single.
Yes, it does, just like ours.
And.
Not just like ours.
No, and they still, at the end of the year, end up with a surplus of a million dollars plus.
And the worst part about it is, is that when it goes up and there's a surplus at the end of the year, that figure that it went up to is now the new maintenance of that figure.
Exactly.
That's right, so it's got tons of fluff underneath it, but boy, that, we've got to hold to that new figure. The other problem is that we're down if we do and down if we don't, as far as I see with this situation. If we don't give them this money, then if we keep it, that's fine, but next year they're going to add this money that they need onto their budget, they're going to increase their budget, and all of a sudden, if the taxpayers approve it, we've got a new higher maintenance benefit figure because they had to add this capital funds that they didn't have this year onto next year's budget, so next year's budget's going to be even higher and a maintenance benefit figure is going to be even higher. So with them, excuse my language, we're down if we do and down if we don't.
Yes, Silvia.
I want to back up, the, as we all know, the town of Hopkinton, the easy nap is you keep two months of funding, you do fund balances, because municipalities get their money, the majority of their money, from taxes. We don't get our taxes on July 1st, so on July 1st and then August, you need those two months of fund balance, you can pay your bills or your checks will bounce, so it's easy, it makes sense. The school department never used to keep money and never used to call that they say that they needed a fund balance. This was a new thing that came up in the past few years and the, one of the, and one of the reasons, let me give you an example, the Hope Valley School bricks, the repelling the bricks was a million something.
Maybe anyone?
So, yeah, it was close to a million dollars and that was unexpected, it wasn't budgeted, so it was a big deal, all of a sudden I said, oh, this is, you've got to have this done and the school's got to open in September. So they did it and they took the money from the available balances that they had, and at the end of the year, even though they spent just over a million dollars, they had more than two and a half million left over that year in surplus. They do not need a fund balance, they don't, they get, on July 1, they sent us a bill and at the end of the month, we better pay them. So charitable gets its money from sending out a bill and they get it within 30 days or however many days, they're going to get that money, so they don't need, and they say they need the money in case something horrible happens. Well, something horrible did happen and that's the biggest expense there's ever been. There's never been anything close to this, even the Richmond roof, that was an issue because they have plenty of money available. So they're hanging on to fund balance because the towns, and we've talked about it for years, trying to get our fund balance in the right spot and building it back up. So we need that, we actually have to have it, but the school departments don't, they really don't, and they don't have to come back to the town and Hope Valley School was falling down in the knee. And they don't have to come back to the town if Hope Valley School was falling down and they needed a million dollars. They simply go to their budget, and they pull out a million dollars, and that's exactly what they did. So, anyway, but we're not gonna change their mind. I just couldn't help but having to explain the differences. And an auditor went to the school committee and explained the whole thing to them, saying, "Yeah, you need X amount," and they do, you know, whether it's a percent, a budget, whatever.
Some of that's the new operating processes, though. I mean, most of, there isn't a business out there, there isn't a town, there isn't a school, that a CVA says you should have a particular percentage in your fund balance. Now, they can be out there, like 17%, but what Charro's carrying is 2%. That's a very small percentage out of the 7 million dollars budget. And that does cover, and all the CBAs ask for that, and are the method, they demand it. The state, the state says, this is the right...
Not for schools, though?
Yes, schools too, no, schools too.
I guess we'll agree that this is a... But anyway, I think Brian had illustrated it on packets, though. The money that was set aside already for this capital campaign. And again, if the funding continues, which it typically does, in another two years, they should have close to what they're 3.25.
Yeah, if they spend what's been budgeted, they should be okay. I mean, they have to get, you know, 50% or 6.5.
Yeah, 3.25. So I think going along with what already has been allocated in the last three budget cycles, you continue it for two more years, they're gonna have that money, right? So I guess the argument that they need to plug in this transportation aid to this particular capital fund, I don't think holds any water, at least for me. Because it seems like it's continually budgeted for, and, you know, you're not gonna fool me.
If they continue to plug in surpluses, as they come up with surpluses, maybe they should use that money, that's some of their surplus, to cover their capital expenses or the capital campaign.
Once they spend their capital money, that they, the 3 million, once they spend that, they have to have the same amount again. Because they'll continually spend millions more. So they're gonna have to add all that to the budget.
And every year, they have a big surplus. I don't know where it comes from, but they got a big surplus. And, you know, it should drive the taxpayers nuts, drive me nuts.
So, what do you guys think? Can we get a consensus, I guess, or at least...
I'm unworking here.
Send a letter, just so that Charros are noticed that we want the categorical aid. If it is restored, we want our share of 35.7% or whatever the heck it is back to us. And not stay the same.
So long.
Okay. Of course, someone's named, actually, someone else won't be...
Seven.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Could you wait a minute before you leave?
Yeah.
Attorney Man Kuso is in the audience, hello, ma'am.
Hi.
Please have a podium.
I didn't break any speeding while I was getting down.
Thank you. This is the first item on the new business to discuss, consider, and possibly vote to authorize the town manager to sign a proposed legal services agreement, by which the town would join several other Rhode Island municipalities as plaintiffs in certain multi-district litigation against those entities legally responsible for the wrongful distribution of prescription opiates, and to recover damages caused by those so responsible.
Thank you, sir. Hi, my name is Eva Man Kuso, and I'm a 35-year Rhode Island trial attorney. I have had the privilege and pleasure to be a, born and raised in Rhode Island, so it's something that I feel near and dear in my heart on issues that affect each and every community. This is my 25th presentation to city and town councils. Actually, it's on 26, because we have 25 that have signed on so far to litigation. And basically, what happened is, to make, you know, I know the hour's late, but I wanna give you some background. Over the last 15 years or so, as a trial attorney, I've worked with national lawyers on different issues affecting public health. And so I have a relationship with the lawyers that are doing this kind of work. And from time to time, they'll call me and say, "We're working on this type of suit and that type of suit." So about a year ago, they contacted me and said, "Eva, we have evidence that opioid distributors have been circumventing the law, and instead of doing what they were supposed to do, and being gatekeepers for the prescription drugs, what they were doing is they were colluding together. So we're gonna file a lawsuit against them. Do you think that's something Rhode Island would be interested in?" And I said, "You know what, just really anecdotally, from what I hear, just living in the community, it's a real problem in Rhode Island." So at that part, what I did is, I had worked with, now Lieutenant Governor Dan McKee, on education issues when I chaired the Board of Education. And so I knew he had a consortium of mayors and town managers that were meeting on a regular basis. So I went to see him, and I talked to him about the possibility of, just talking to the mayors about what was going on nationally. I brought in our national counsel so that he could describe what we were doing. And from that, the last two months, I've been on a whirlwind, spending nights just like this, talking to town councils about what we're doing in terms of making sure that the big three distributors are held responsible for their role in the opioid crisis. Over the last two days, I, last night, I went to a town hall meeting that was filmed, and actually is being shown right now by Channel 6, and listened to four parents and three addicts talk about their road to recovery, and just the pain that they've borne through in dealing with opioid issues. So that's, we know that's there. And in every city and town, there have been people that have been affected by this disease and this illness. But what always is in the back of my mind is, I look at the distributors, and that Congress knew in 1970 that opioids were gonna be a very strong medication. And they knew right away that there had to be some monitoring. And opiates have a place in our society. It's not like tobacco, or asbestos, or lead paint, that have no redeeming value. Opioids for people that have, you know, end-stage cancer or chronic pain, it's a lifesaver to them. And Congress knew this. So in 1970, they set up the golden tickets for, and called them distributors. And distributors had one job, and that was to monitor and look at the manufacturers. And sound the alarms when a community, or a physician, or a pharmacy had unusual activity. Well, what we know from the law, and what has happened so far, is not only did they not sound the alarm, but they colluded together with the manufacturers. So that when there was an uptake, they went and marketed to the area where there was an uptake. So people say, "Well, why would anybody do that? You know, nobody's trying to kill anybody." And I said, "Well, in 2016, the big three distributors, in one year, $460 billion in revenue." So, you know, I can be a little naive from time to time, but that's an eye-opener to everybody. So when they're making that kind of money, they're looking, not only looking the other way, but also colluding together. So we've put this lawsuit together. There are about 400 cities and towns that have filed suit. They were consolidated, it's called multi-district litigation. So it's a little different than tobacco, but basically what they did is they've been consolidated in the federal district court in Ohio right now for discovery purposes. We have our first five lawsuits in the queue to get started. They'll be filed within the next couple of weeks, the first people that signed on. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna file. If you hire us, we'll file on behalf of the town of Hopkinton. And what I really like about this litigation is that it's not a top-down effect. What we'll do is come in and work with your town officials, and your solicitor, and your town manager, to say, "What are the damages that have affected your town?" There are three buckets, if you will. One is the past amount for law enforcement, for first responders, for knock-in, for all of the tools that have been paid up to this point. And that's a little tricky, because there are a lot of times that opioids are at the root of the call, but it might not be documented that way. For instance, a domestic that happened on police, or, you know, while the fire go out, fire chiefs, or people go out to investigate. School absenteeism is another area that we're finding national, right? So think about it, it makes a lot of sense. If mom and dad are incapacitated, the kids aren't going to school, and repeating a year, what have you. So the tentacles are just everywhere. So one bucket is for what we've paid already to date. The second bucket is the treatment end. And we're not suggesting that every city and town is going to have a own treatment facility, but wouldn't it be nice to have money to be able to collaborate with your local cities and towns to do something on a real basis? You know, right now, and Rhode Island, believe it or not, is one of the leaders in doing aggressive treatment for opioids. The problem is, like anything else, the funding, we fund 30-day treatment plans. Well, we know it takes six months for opioids to clear the system. So what happens is then we, you know, then we dog the person and say, "Well, wait a minute, you know, they went through this 30-day recovery program, we spent X amount of dollars, and they didn't recover." The national average is six times to do that in and out of recovery. It's a disease that lasts for a long period of time, and we just don't right now have the money to do it the way it should be done on the treatment end. And the third bucket, which is the most, I think the most important bucket for our state, and that is education. We need to start training kids in the middle schools and in the high schools that the prescription drugs in mom and dad's closet are just as dangerous as the heroics on the street. And with that prevention, and with the companies that cause the problem paying for it, I think if we would have the resources, we'd be able to do it on a multidisciplined approach to it, which is really what it's gonna take. My view is, you know, if I drive drug down the street and whack into a car, I'm gonna have to be held responsible, right? So it's time to be held responsible that caused the problem. They knew it was a problem, not only did they not do their jobs, but they also colluded so that they could make it worse. So we'd be honored to do it, to represent Hopkinton along with the other cities and towns in Rhode Island, and get started on putting together a real solution. The one thing I will tell you is that the federal judge in Ohio is quite astute. I mean, he, at the very first conference of lawyers, which I'm told looked like a bar association meeting, because there were so many on both sides, he called everybody together, not only the plaintiffs lawyers, but the defense lawyers, the lawyers for the companies, and said, "You know what? This is a national epidemic now, we don't have time to wait." And that's a really strong message when a trial judge says that. So he's going to attempt to do settlements, whether it's not, it's successful or not. You know, I always tell people that McPherson thought they were paying a lot of money, pharma, they had a lot of money in a fine, paying $100 million. Sounds good, except for you look at it against $460 billion in one year in revenues. So, you know, how big of a fine is it really? So we have no idea whether that'll be successful or not, but the lawyers that have joined together, they have put in millions of dollars of their own money to take on this public health challenge. So that's what we'll have, you know, we'll be able to fight that, whatever comes from the other side, because we're properly equipped to do it. And these are lawyers with a track record that have worked on it. And myself, I've worked with them over the last 15 years, so I think that's important as well. I'm not going anywhere, so I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, and who's, a question, somebody for Eva?
We, our solicitor, Kevin McAllister, in the back, I don't know if you've met before.
I know him very well.
Oh, okay. One of the issues that he brought up was what would happen if there's a counter-suit.
Well, that's, you know, that's, questions raised a lot. And I can tell you that I have never seen, and I mean never, in a case like this, where the manufacturers would ever have the gall to file a suit against a town for the injuries that happen like this. So while it's America, and for $200 you can sue anybody, I can't guarantee anything, but we've never seen it. We didn't see it in tobacco, we didn't see it in asbestos, we didn't see it in lead paint. So I can't imagine that they would have the gall, especially after they've already paid criminal fines on some of this too, that they would come back.
Tom? Barbara?
Actually, I have several.
Yep.
So this is, you're going, what you're, you're going after the pharmaceutical industries? But you also said physicians and pharmacies. Are you going after people, places, and manufacturers?
Physicians, right now, the physicians and the pharmacists are already being held responsible. Physicians are losing their licenses and going to prison. Pharmacists are losing their license and going to prison. The only people that have not been held responsible civilly are the manufacturers and the distributors of the opioids. So those are the gen categories. Distributors...
Distributors.
And manufacturers.
Manufacturers. Okay. And how do you, when you have to prove this in court, these are, you're doing this on prescription, how do you break out the black market? How do you break out people getting drugs on the street that didn't go through distribution, or the distributors and the manufacturers?
They all started with the distributors and the manufacturers, that's the whole point.
So you don't have to break out the prescription from the black market?
No, it's their drug.
Okay, and what about other addictive drugs? They're not part of this?
Nope, right now, it's oxycodone, hydrocodone that we're looking at right now.
And those are the only two?
Well, there's other, there's other chemical backups to it, and quite frankly...
Like fentanyl?
The physicians, no, it's the opioids, it's the heavy-duty opioids.
So only oxycodone?
It's oxycodone, fentanyl, and hydrocodone. That's what they manufacture. And the three, the McKesson, Carnel, and Marasol, I'm just referring to my notes.
Those are the three manufacturers?
The three distributors, and then the separate manufacturers.
All right, and you said there were 400 other towns, where are they?
Cities and towns, all over the country.
Okay, so they're just scattered?
Yep. They're everywhere from, I just spoke to one of my town councils in Arizona, working with the Native Americans on their pot. San Diego is one of their...
But 400 seem very small for the entire country.
Oh, well, that's where we are so far, and that's our group. That's our group, that's how many we represent. Actually, we represent 250 of the 400 that have filed so far.
And you call it a disease, but is that official? It's not an addiction, it's called a disease now?
It's always been called a disease.
The addiction is the disease? The opiates are called a disease?
That's the way the medical...
That's what I was asking, so...
That's the way I've heard the medical people talk about it, is that it's a disease. The disease addiction.
Okay.
Eva, a couple of questions. I do wanna congratulate you, or support you, because a lot of times, it's almost like psychology, where there's two main types of psychology, there's behavioralism and there's psychoanalysis. And we've been doing psychoanalysis for so long, treating the results of the situation, and we're finally going after the cause, and that's behavioralism. And that's what you're doing now, that's a wonderful idea. Let's get to the root of the problem, by treating the people that have come along. It's finally freedom, but let's just clarify on why they're doing this, why this is happening, and why the markets play the role here. Two questions. What is the benefit of more and more communities? In other words, instead of 400, you have 800 or 1,000. What's the benefit of having all these problems?
The benefit is that we spread the costs of litigation among and between more cities and towns. So, you know, you have certain experts that are going to be, like the epidemiologists and the economists, and people that are gonna put together this matrix, along with your town officials. Those are the same ones that'll be working in other states and what have you. So we have to spread that cost among and between our clients. So that's the benefit of having several clients, because it's a fixed cost, and then we're able to spread it across.
So there will be a charge, if we join the suit, there will be a charge to this town of some sort? We don't know what it is yet?
It will not be charged, they'll come out of the proceeds of the settlement. The town will never come up with $1. It'll never come from what the town offers, it will be as part of the settlement. So our fee agreement, if you look at it, it's a percentage of the amount recovered, plus whatever costs that we get. And the cost that we're able to do, in our consortium, is spread across all of our clients. We did this, and it's topical now, let me explain to you, because we did it in the station partner case. 15 years ago, I was one of the seven lawyers in law firms that joined together to litigate those cases. And what we did is, we put in our own money together, we pooled our money to take on, you know, to take on the case. And then we were able to spread that with the court's direction among and between our clients, so that nobody bears the cost of litigation themselves.
Okay, that's good. Why cities and towns, why communities, why not states?
Yeah, interesting question. Well, in some jurisdictions, they have to go statewide. In other jurisdictions like Osborn, we have homeless charter, and we have independent boards like this that run the town. We can go that way. The other issue that's, I've come up probably about 25 or 25 times at the end, is that it goes into the state coffers and goes to Never Never Land. And how do our people in Hopkinton get taken care of? So this... So this approach, the multi-district litigation approach, takes that away, because it's actually your lawsuit. So when I come back to you, I say, "Ladies and gentlemen, they've offered X amount of dollars for the town of Hopkinton. What do you think? And where's it going to go to?" You know, obviously, the court's going to give some guidance. You can't, you know, as I say, you can't erect a, you know, a new statue of the town council up front, you know? You have to use it for the problem. But actually, sometimes I say, "Statue of me on the front lawn." I use that from time to time. It depends, sometimes one gets a bigger laugh than another. But seriously, you look at it from the perspective of the individual city and town, and that's what I like about the multi-district litigation, is it gives you the control for your town to tell us where, what money should go in what buckets, you know? And every issue is different, right? The suburban issue is different than the issue in the inner cities and in the urban in terms of prevention and what have you. A lot of places say, you know, "If I had 25, you know, councilors, recovery coaches to go in and talk to people, I'd do better." Right now, I have one or a half, you know? So, but that's going to be city and town, and we'll build that model as we go along.
And the reason why I ask that is because it would seem that the muscle of the state is better than the muscle of Hopkinton. Obviously, we're 8,500 people and the state's close to 1 million, and all of a sudden, it's the state of Rhode Island, the state of Connecticut, the state of Colorado, all these states versus the drug manufacturers. So it sounds very impressive that way.
I don't know. I like it.
I like the money coming this way.
I like to argue in front of juries, and juries like people better than they like states.
Really good.
So, you know, from the standpoint of making sure that the money goes to where it has to go to and what have you, this is a very local problem. It's a local problem because it hits us cities and towns in lots of different ways, so that's how we're presenting it. The other thing also is that you're joining with, so while I'm going states, we have 25 cities and towns sign on, you know, from the biggest to the very smallest. So, you know, we're now at about 75% of the population of the state so far, so we're, I'm still on the road.
Yeah, good. Thanks.
Is North Kingston one of your clients?
North Kingston, North Kingston has signed on.
Because that is the two colleges in this part of the state.
Yep. North Kingston has signed on. South Kingston has signed on as well. North Kingston, South Kingston, yeah. Yeah, your eyes in South Kingston.
Yep.
Well, it's scattered. It's really quite large in South County.
Eva, could you just kind of touch upon, I know you mentioned this, and I think it's important that you maybe mention again, the role that the distributors play in terms of the gatekeeping, you know, because I think that's the key to the whole...
Sure.
At least in my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, but I think it's really a big part of this. You know, they turn a blind eye essentially and collude with these...
Oh, they did worse than turn a blind eye. A blind eye is you're not paying attention, and, you know, I keep looking at, and I'll always say Chief McGary and Town Manager McGary, State Trooper McGary. We think of Rico, yeah, no. My father's partner, McGary, from the old State Police days. But I look at this from the perspective of, you know, we hear about Rico, right? The racketeering and corruption. Right? We hear about that in terms of like the mafia and what have you. And if you think about it in terms of people joining together for criminal enterprise, that's exactly what we did. So it's one thing to turn a blind eye, you know? If you turn on them, not looking and what have you, it's one thing. Like to market. So they have the data, they get the data surreptitiously from the manufacturers that they're not supposed to have. They get the data. Instead of being the whistleblowers they're supposed to be, first of all, they fire the DEA agents. That was on 60 Minutes, I don't know if you saw it. If you get a chance to watch that 60 Minutes show, they're our experts. And these guys are unbelievable. I mean, these are career law enforcement people that had this in 2005. They were screaming, "We've got a problem here." But there was so much money that McKesson hired lobbyists for each and every one of the legislators to go in there with their white papers and try to explain this and that and what have you. So anyway, the DEA agents, they'll tell you that not only did they not blow the whistle, but they joined together. So they took the information they weren't supposed to have, and they found out, like this one town in West Virginia, West Virginia, there was something like, you know, 250,000 pills that went into a town of 11,000 people, you know? Yeah, so it's amazing when you look at it. And, you know, I look at it here in Rhode Island. We have another one of my, I call them my statistics, you know? The other thing that I look at is, in Rhode Island, in 2016, so Washington County, where we are, right? For every 100 residents, there were 63 prescriptions written. Every, and that's, this is the CDC's results. In Kent County, 72 for every 100. So for every 100 people there...
Methamphetus or any medicine?
No, 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 this is just opioids. These are prescriptions for opioids. Now, when this drug was first introduced into society, we know it was addictive, even though they pitched to the doctors that it wasn't. Congress knew it was addictive, that's why they had to set up these gatekeepers. So all we're doing is seeing the exact result of what no regulation would have shown. So it's worse than turning a blind eye. It's actually taking the information and using it for their own purposes. And when you look at those numbers, $460 billion in revenue in one year.
That's just all opioids?
Opiates, that's it.
That's the whole of it?
No, that's the three big distributors. And they have 85% of the markets.
And that's just the opioids, that's not all the prescriptions?
Correct.
Okay.
I know. I did the same thing. I have posed a question, Tom Coudier, who was just hired by the governor's office, to, you know, to spearhead on the statewide level, I said, "What would you do with $460 billion?" You know, I said, "It's a game changer," which is a great way to word it, right? It's a game changer. You can hit it on all fours, which is really what we have to do. We have to do, it's not like it's three separate buckets of damages, we have to do everything, right? We have to make sure the law enforcement have the tools to save people's lives today. But we have to do it at the same time that we're educating young kids, young kids about the dangers of opioids. Remember, these are people that get prescription drugs legally. They're not buying them on the streets. So you have these, you know, young athletes that are going into the doctor's offices and, you know, have an ACL tear, or break a leg, or get a wisdom T taken out. And they're predisposed to addiction. Parents don't know, right? Here's a prescription for Vicodin. Child's in pain, they get the Vicodin. Some people, that's the beginning and the slope. So it's really that, I mean, it's really that dramatic.
And so you have the three buckets. So how does the treatment facility fit in? Because that would take an enormous amount of whatever money came to the state, I mean, just the state alone, let alone any of the towns. How do you plan on addressing treatment facilities?
I have no idea.
I have no idea either.
My job is just to get the bucks. I tell them all the time, there's smarter people that know that. That's, you have people in your town that can, that are going to give us that information. Your first responders, the people that work on the streets, the people that work in the schools, that can talk about the treatment part of it. We're putting that together, and I say it, I say it tongue-in-cheek, but we're putting that part together. But we have a team of doctors that are working with all the best experts in the country to put that together.
If the towns are part of it and the state is not, and the money comes to the towns, whatever amount of money that is, how do you or the court, perhaps it's the judge, determine those three buckets? And especially the treatment facility bucket, because that would go, like in South County, that would go to one town and wouldn't go necessarily all the town.
Oh, no, it wouldn't go to all the towns, for you, we are individuals.
Right, right. But the facility is a place, and it wouldn't necessarily be in Hopkinton, nor should it be. It might have to be in South Kingston or Wakefield or something. But how do you make that determination? Or who makes that determination?
That's made by, that's made by the town. So all the towns together in the end, where in fact we settle the suit. Or we settle the suit.
So when there's a lump sum that is settled for Rhode Island, all the towns that are part of that?
No, because it won't be for Rhode Island. It's every single city and town has its own lawsuit. So that will be one of the metrics of damages. But that's being worked out as we speak, and that's a moving target, you know? It may be that some cities and towns want to have more in terms of the treatment facilities. Maybe they say, "Listen, we don't have as big a problem in Hopkinton as we do, say, in the Tuckett, so we want to put our money into treatment, into prevention, or into more law enforcement or what have you." So it's a sliding...
I think what I find difficult is that the treatment facility is a great idea, and I think that should be done, but the problem is I don't see how each individual city and town is going to say, "Oh, you could have my money and build a treatment facility." I doubt most of the towns would do that. So I think that's an area that...
She just explained that you do it, use the money for someone else's...
I know that you can, I know you can, but I think the treatment facility in particular is a really great bucket, but I don't know how you would address that bucket.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you that I was on, I can tell you what I was on panel today with the director of behavioral research for the state. Behavioral is a big, long name, but anyway, she talked about May 1st, that the state was already starting to do something with brick and mortar for treatment facilities. So I think it's ongoing things, but I can't address every single question about the specifics of how it's done. I can only tell you that it will be done. So, and that's going to be a lot of collaboration and a lot of discussions in terms of where it is, how many, whether we even need more. It may be we don't need more brick and mortar, we just need more boots on the ground. You know, what I hear a lot is that, you know, if we had more mobile units, you know, so that it could go and get to the person immediately, because that's in fact when people are ready to go into recovery, that you have to be able to react right away and not say, "Well, we're going to bed in 10 days." So, you know, all of that's being done, but there's medical professionals that will be the experts that we have funded that will answer those questions.
Kevin, you have anything? So what do you guys think? You want to kind of digest it? What do you want to do?
I think I'd like to digest it. Put it out for the next 10 minutes. I think we also talked about looking at the trust and seeing if they knew, and if we had a lawsuit against this, if they covered it. We don't think they do.
This is, this issue's been, this is the 25th time we've talked about it, so those issues have been raised before, and I don't think anybody from the trust was worried either, so you can talk to them, but obviously, if you were everywhere to sue, you'd be in walking hands between Mr. McAllister and the end of the... When is your next council meeting?
Next one. 35.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice drive back. Oh, I have a good stretch.
Next, under boards and commissions, discuss considering vote to appoint Ian Anderson for the charter commission. Any discussion? All who's in favor? Thank you.